Hello, everybody. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for day-to-day, April the 23rd, 2015. Begin with our agenda, which, number one, says "Call to order." Lynda will record a record of attendance. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest at this point? Hearing none. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And are there any additions or deletions?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair, Deputy Mayor. Item 7B and item 7C are both responses to council. Yet this is Committee of the Whole. The motion was to report to council. And I have a problem with discussing this already. Committee of the Whole is one animal, council is another animal. And if we have a motion to report to council... So I think my question would be to the CIO, should we maybe not ask to report to council anymore? And maybe just ask to report all of this stuff to the committee?
Committee of the Whole? Is that what the intent is? Because I... My motion was to report to council, and I would like to see it report to council.
It's at your pleasure. I can put these off till two weeks' time.
They're both council motions. We have a couple of...
So Ken, if I could also just respond to that. I wouldn't mind having a dis... If we have a... Can we have a discussion, if time permitting, or... But no motion? Just for more information. I'm not against what you're saying. I appreciate what you're saying. But from a discussion point of view...
Yep. I have no problem on 7... Especially 7C. Mr. Ernst is here. He normally would not be here at a council meeting. And I have no difficulty with 7C, because I think personally, that's... This is the place for it here. And I think the intention was for him to report to us here on that. It was the 7B one that was dealing with a staffing thing that was a council resolution. So I really think we should look at 7C, because the motion wasn't really clear at council when it would come up. But the motion, 7B, was to clear from council to report to council. And I suspect Councilor Mooney, I know, maybe... May have been wanting to be involved with that as well.
Have no difficulty with that. But you're okay with what I suggested, are you, Ken? Yeah, okay. There is one additional item. Communities in Bloom appointment.
Yes.
Okay. Any other items?
Move the agenda to be accepted. No?
I do have one property item to discuss in camera, if we have time this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hearing no further additions or deletions, call for approval of the agenda. It's a move by Counselor Dawes, seconded by... Don't be afraid, anybody.
We need people to...
Oh, I missed that. No, thank you very much for that. Thanks, Ken. Sorry about that, Ken.
I'll send it.
All right. Thank you very much, Danny. All those in favor, please say aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. I'm getting my feet wet here, you guys.
Are you interested?
Yes. Under staff reports, we have our Planning Department report. And we have Caroline with us today. So if there's any questions or comments, Caroline is here to help out. I think, for me, the outstanding event was, two nights ago, was it, Caroline? That we were here in the town hall, and part of a presentation orchestrated by Natalie. So I was... And we... And the attendance was outstanding. A roomful of people, probably 50 or 60 people, standing room only. So any more comments or questions? And Caroline is more than prepared to respond. Counselor Dawes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that evening was more than successful. I'm still getting positive, very, very positive and exciting feedback. People that came are... They're really happy that they did come. So thank you very much. Also, I just wanted to say that the planning reports, I've never... They've never been as informative, and they've never been so easy to read. So thank you very much. That was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor, Ken.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a comment, Caroline. And again, I just read your report, and I apologize this morning. I didn't check. I do notice that you did one of the comments work with a GIS technician to create an interactive Google map that could be embedded in the town's website. Looks very good. I'm wondering, this is a thought, and a bit of a mercenary here from Heritage. Any thought about maybe outlining the Heritage District in there, where it has won several national awards?
Yeah, that would be really easily done, if that's something that you...
Be nice to designate that, because it is a very popular walking area. And just as a thought on that.
Nothing been finalized on that. That was just something I took a course on, and I thought might be neat to have on our website. So Tracy and I were just playing around with it, and came up with some ideas, yeah.
Thank you very much. Hearing no further questions or comments, can say thank you very much, Caroline.
Great, thank you.
Moving along to the Economic Development Report. Natalie?
Sorry, just again, it may involve Caroline, too. The interactive, the map for the proposed bus route, which is absolutely awesome. Is there a chance that we can get a copy of that sent to us? Because I'm getting a lot of queries on that. And that's a really nice, what she's done there, to show the catchment areas. That's something that'd be very useful.
Thanks, Ken. Natalie, your report. We have a copy in front of us, and I think it's already on the website here, so I can see it on the computer.
Great, if there's any questions.
You must feel good about the evening the other night?
Yeah, we actually had 63 people attending. And what was really interesting is that a large percentage was from the business community, so that is really... That's a really good part of the attendance. I just want to identify a correction in my report. Item 1.3, under the April update, council did not approve the corporate identity and branding policy, because it wasn't submitted for review and approval. So that is incorrect.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of questions. On Tuesday night, they mentioned that there were copies of the REN profiles available. Are they still kicking around? I didn't quite see them.
They were actually the little USBs that we were handing out. So be more than happy to make sure that's in your mailbox.
I would like to get one of those. Thank you. And the second thing I wanted to mention, just going through your report, and it slipped me here for a minute, but I just spotted it's a very thorough report. And it's gone right through... There was a question I had, and it escaped me, but it may come back. I'll just defer to somebody else. It'll come back to me in a second. Yep, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I noticed that at the Saltscapes Expo, and maybe the wording is awkward, that it says "Receive sponsorship for prize draw from Bellamper Smartphone," that will feature the new Heritage Tour app. Where are we at with this Heritage Tour app? I was off the general impression that people who are in Heritage properties would have some input into the information that was going to be put on that app.
I'm not the person to comment on that. It hasn't started. Caroline can probably address that.
Okay, I'm just curious where we're at on that, because I did get a query about a week ago from one of the property owners in the Heritage District, who was asking about that, like what exactly will be put on about his particular house? And would he have any input into it?
Yeah, so we had a meeting about this yesterday, the Heritage App Committee. We were actually reviewing the proposals we received for our request for proposal on the actual construction of the app. And what we were trying to decide was if we would be doing just the houses in the Conservation District, or if we would be doing the houses along the walking tour. And I believe what we decided was we would just do the... I think it's about 30 houses that are on the walking tour, that we would try and accomplish those first. And the intention is to actually send out a letter to the homeowners that would be part of that group, and ask that they want to be part of the app. And if they agree, then that's great, and they would get to look at the content. And as we move forward, making decisions about what that would mean, we'll advise them.
So obviously, it hasn't been started to construct yet, so the chances of it being available for this season is probably remote. Am I safe to assume?
No, we... In the request for proposal that was sent out, we asked that the app be completed by the end of July. So the responses that we received did set that timeline. We will be... I believe it's coming to council to let you know which applicant the committee would recommend that we hire. So you'll be discussing that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Caroline. And Natalie?
Just another question, and this was a query that was given to me this morning to Natalie, and maybe to clarify it. How do I put this? A chef, I guess a valid chef, raised the issue that apparently on Thursday, on Tuesday night at that thing, there were four chefs introduced. And this particular chef, who is a papered chef, raised issue that the people who were introduced as chefs may not all be chefs. And I'm not much on chefs and cooks. But this individual, who is a Red Seal chef, took offense, as it is in a small town, that some people were billed as chefs, that he is suggesting is not, are not chefs. So I'm just wondering, Saltscapes, are we introducing all these four individuals that are going to Saltscapes for our culinary experience as chefs? And are we sure that they are chefs?
Yes, that would be terminology, because it is a designation if you are a chef versus a cook versus something else. There is no introduction at Saltscapes. So at Saltscapes, we're presenting the town of Yarmouth, and we're presenting samplings of great products that you can get here when you visit. So we're not there to promote any individual business, but rather the town of Yarmouth and what we offer in culinary experiences. There will be no introductions.
So the items that will be served to the public will be items that are available in this area? So a person who is trying something at Saltscapes would be able to come to Yarmouth, go to a place, and acquire that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Natalie, very much. Next item is Jeff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report is attached to the agenda. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer now, or any time in the future.
So as Jeff has suggested, if there's any comments or questions, he'd be... I'd like very much to speak with you at any time. We move along to the next item, our Fire Department report. And we have John in attendance. I don't think...
I was just reading in the Vanguard that you had your recognition supper, was it? For your senior firefighters, retired firefighters?
The Veterans Association had that.
Veterans Association, yeah, they had that.
They had their supper.
How did that go?
I was there. It went pretty well, I think.
Good turnout?
It was good. It's always a good turnout, yeah.
Yeah. I miss going to them when we were on the committee. We used to get invited to go to that when we had the committee, but...
Yeah, I don't have any control.
No, that's right. I understand that. But anyway, I was really interested in the article that was in the Vanguard. It showed one of my friends that lives out on the... Not Regent Street, out on the Wyman Road. The guy that was being recognized for retirement.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, DuVoo, yeah. And I read all what he... When they were interviewing him, and it brought back a lot of memories, you know? But when he was a fireman, and I was thinking of the different ones that he was talking about, the fires and the mishaps, and the St. George Fire Department. And the St. George Fire Department, we lived right on the other street when St. George Fire Department used to be there. And he was one of the volunteers that used to do the Christmas thing at the playground, right? At St. George. They were the ones that used to put it on. So it was a really interesting article, and I was glad to see that he was really recognized. But he was... He didn't take the recognition as it was just part of his job. But it was a really interesting read, and I'm glad that he was really recognized, like all the other ones. So I'm glad that everybody had a good time. So that's... I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Counselor Danny. Any other questions or comments? John, thank you very much. Next is our Operational Services Report. We had David Ernst here. Any questions or comments of David? I don't think it's on the... Counselor Sandy.
I'll just ask how Hawthorne Street's coming along.
It's coming along very well. I think we're on schedule with it. And of course, we won't be able to pave until first part of June, so...
Right. Thank you.
Counselor Danny.
Thank you. Any idea when the sewer pipe is going to be down by the treatment plant, like the line put back out? Have you been in contact with the contractor? He's still interested in doing it?
Yeah, we were looking at alternative method of reusing the existing pipe.
Oh, good, good.
And repairing it to save...
Good.
See if we could save some money.
Yeah, that's great.
So it looks like it may be practical to do that.
Oh, great. That's good. That's good news. One more item. I see the boys were out, your crew was out with your new paving, recycling paving machines over there. Did they run into problems with it? Or are they having problems with operating it, or...
No, we're good when they hitted out.
Yes? Okay. It's working great? They have no problem with it?
Well, they did have a problem with one of the switches they had to replace after they got back to the shop after the first outing.
Okay. I see some of it down. It looks good. They've done a good job. They've got a compactor and everything, where they beat it down? Yeah, I think it's probably going to work great. I know they patched quite a few... Quite a few of the holes. There's lots of holes to patch, I'm sure. But the ones that they did patch were quite big, and it seems to be smoothed right off. So I hope that works great for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Counselor Ken.
Yes, Mr. Ernst. I'm wondering, where are we standing with the compost bagger this year? I know it's that... We got... We've done the food and drug stuff. We've got...
We finally got our...
Certification.
Labeling approved.
So are we...
By them. There were sticklers on that. I don't know why, really, but...
So are we going to be able to do something with it this year? As in, put bagging it and maybe marketing it?
I think so. Of course, we have to dry it out. We've had this extremely wet spring so far.
Yeah.
But that's our hopes.
But once it's dried out, then we can bag it and keep it bagged, can't we?
Yeah.
Because it's going to be pretty dry in those bags, once it's there.
Yeah.
So good. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ken. We can move along to the next report, the Finance Report. Jerry?
Don't think I have further outthink from two days ago. Not yet.
That's...
For a rehab actor?
It's always... It's always... It's life itself. That's what life's all about. So thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on to the next item, our Recreation Report. And Frank? And I should know that lad's name. You're a helper.
Kirby Mallett is a student placement from the Yarmouth High School. So I did attach a report. As Counselor McCasick said, it was quite a lengthy report, but it's our annual report. So I apologize for the length, but there's lots of good stuff in there. If there's any questions or comments, I'll attempt to answer them.
Counselor Danny.
Thank you. Frank, how are things shaping up for this summer with the daycare camps? Are they daycare camps?
Not daycare. Summer active camps is what we like to call them.
Okay. How are those shaping up?
We close tomorrow for employment applications, and we've had a lot of response from returning staff that are not only returning staff, but trained returning staff. And... But a good response from the application, so we'll be attempting to put coordinators in place that start mid-May. And then the leaders come on towards the end of June, and we've got some staff training sessions set with other rec departments in Yarmouth and Shelburne Counties. And we'll be moving right along with similar plans that we've had in the past years with our Main Street Playground, Sports Camp for ages nine to 12, and Summer Fun Day Camp for ages five to eight.
Okay. Have you been down, looked down around the playground area, the building itself?
Yes.
It needs some maintenance, some work there?
Yes.
Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Who's responsible for that?
The Town Parks Department. With the basic arrangement that we've always had with that program there is that we run the programs, and then the Parks Department takes care of the facility, so...
Question... Your Malo Boat Club, the boats, the war canoes and all the other stuff, do you pressure wash them off? Do you wash them off before you put them back in the water?
Yes.
Everything is cleaned up before you put it back in the water, then?
Yes. If you're referring to the dragon boats that are quite stained, you know, it's something that we can't really get off, but they are cleaned with a bleach solution.
How's the boat club itself?
Boat club is good. We're looking at doing some repairs to the back deck, just to make things more sturdy there. And we're also looking at doing some winterizing of some of the... The structure is basically a summer facility.
Yeah.
And we're hoping that maybe some new windows, insulating some parts that need to be insulated, repairs to the floor, because there is a crawl space under the floor. You know, that's... The building is old, and there are a few repairs that we've identified.
One more question. This could be for Jeff or for Dave. It's got to do with the playground, playground, one of the buildings down there, where the kids are always on the roof. They're on both of them. Is there any kind of protective device that we can put there? Barbed wire or something? I don't know. You're permitted to use barbed wire, whatever, in the town of Yarmouth, for stopping kids from going up there? I don't know. But they're always on that roof. They're always on the roof, jumping off the roof. I've witnessed it a lot. And there must be something that we could do to prevent them from being able to go on the roof. I don't know what the... I don't know what you could put there. There must be something you could put up around there, some sort of fence or something.
I know I discussed that with Rodney Doucette a couple of years ago, when we had a skylight broken in the building. And really, there's not much that you can do. If we did put something up, it wouldn't be barbed wire, but there could be some mechanism to try to put up on the eaves. But that may be considered as a hazard itself, so that, you know, we could be in worse shape by putting something up that deters children and youth to climb up on the roof, and then they get injured on whatever we put up to try to deter that. So, you know...
It's a shame, because they're wrecking the roof, and they're wrecking the building.
Yeah.
I mean, they're beating holes or tearing the shingles off.
You know, the... How they get up there is they... A lot of times, they'll use the benches and that sort of thing that we have out. Now, we put the benches away during the offseason. But they're, you know, they're climbing up there, and I'm not really sure if there is a solution that, as far as structural...
I know the old crux of the center, and I... I'm not talking the razor wire, but they have prevented devices from people going over, and people from going from inside outside, people from outside inside, right? They have sort of stuff like that. There are buildings around town that have protected devices on their low roofs, so kids in that can't climb up on them, right?
Something I can talk to Rodney about.
Yeah, really, it should, because I don't see... To me, I think if you did something to prevent, at least we're preventing it, they're on there, and they're jumping off left and right, left and right, tearing the shingles and that off. Seems to me there should be a thought given to perhaps put something there. Just my thought. Even though they shouldn't be doing it, but just a thought. Anyway, it's a good report. Good work, as usual.
Thank you.
You fellows are very busy. I was thinking, you know, we had a good reception, good turnout for the volunteers.
We had a higher-than-normal nomination base this year. We had 49 volunteers nominated, and I think we only had nine that were not able to attend on the reception night. So that was a good ratio.
Yeah, really good. And you know what? I was going to mention it at that night, but, you know, your staff really works really hard all year round. And I know you're paid staff, and that's what you're supposed to do. But, you know, your staff and yourself go well beyond, you know, the call of duty for work and then volunteering and stuff. So my hat's off to you, and I thank you personally as being a member of the Recreation Committee. I know all your staff works really hard, and I know that this council appreciates it, and the citizens of the municipal and town of Yarmouth, I'm sure, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure I relay that back to the staff.
Counselor Madeline, do you feel lonely over there?
Yes, I do.
You're on.
Thank you. Hi, Frank. I thoroughly enjoyed reading this report. I had to take a couple of breaks. It was a long, but very, very informative report.
And Madeline, I don't know if you remember, but I have to thank you for the format of the report, because when this council first came on, we were asked to give reports to council to give them an update. And that's the format that I used to update this new council when it came in. And I find it's a... It may be a little... The print is large, so there's...
It's good for our...
You know, maybe I killed a few more trees with it, but it's...
It's good for our eyes.
I thought it would be easier to read, and maybe some of the highlights are more poignant, I guess. So, thank you.
Well done. Well, thank you. You make me feel better for being lonely over here on this side. I have a question for you. It was in one of Misty's, one of Misty's reports, and I know that you can answer this. You can define for me what nature deficit syndrome is. I felt that fascinating. I think I have an idea of what it is, but...
Kids are afraid of the woods. Parents are afraid of the woods. So children today do not play in the woods like we all did. So believe it or not, there are courses and sessions that are being put on to get kids back to nature, so that they're climbing trees and exploring the woods, and, you know, looking at insects and all that stuff. So that's the state that we're in now, is that a lot of children, not only the woods and nature, it's just outdoor play, period. A lot of children, when they come home from school, they're inside on the computer, and they don't... they're inside on the computer, and they don't play out in the yard or they don't climb trees or make forts or do those types of things that we all thought was commonplace. But with technology and all that stuff, so we have children that are... have nature deficit disorder.
Oh, my.
So we're trying to do some things to bring back play and bring back those old styles of play.
Well, good for you. Bless your heart for coming up with that. Now, how large? I don't want to... I only have one other quick question after this. How large is your group? Is it growing? When did you start it?
What we do is we tackle them through our...
And I'm going to turn my light off if I can get, ask another question afterwards. I'm going to turn my light off so the camera...
We... Last summer, we tackled this through our camps. So we have thirty-plus children at each of our three camps all summer, plus different types of fun days and that sort of thing. So we tried to work some of that nature stuff into the regular program of our camps. So we would bring natural resources in. We had our youth active leadership camp that ran for teenagers last year, which we are going to be running again at Ellenwood Park. So that was a big focus of it, was nature. So we're doing it kind of in-house. Misty and Maura both have gone for some training and been a part of, you know, group tanks, group think tanks sort of thing. And that's the way we're delivering it, is more through our camps as part of the regular program. And we have lots of nature around. We were at Arcadia School with the small camp, ages five to eight. So they have the Nature Trail right there. The other camp is out at Maple Grove, near the woods and Nature Trail. The playground oftentimes would... We would take day trips to areas where they could walk Broadbrook or whatever. So that's part of our focus now, is trying to get kids outside to play and bring back nature and that sort of thing.
Great, good. Your summer programs... Your programs or your services, they are offered, what, Monday to Friday? I... That's something that I still haven't, haven't to...
Yes, Monday to Friday, nine to four.
Nine to four?
Yes.
Okay. And how about summers, weekends? Yes, I know you've got the Milo Boat Club is open. I've brought visitors over. They've taken part in the dragon boat.
Milo is open every day in the summer. We have it staffed from ten until seven. So people can come and rent canoes and kayaks, memberships. We sell memberships as well, so individuals can come in and sign out boats. And we have our lifeguard service all summer, seven days a week.
Super, thank you. Now, I see nothing's cheap. This hurts. It must hurt you because it hurts us and our budget.
I know.
Holy cow. But you do give excellent, you do give excellent service and programs for the kids. And your staff is magnificent.
Thank you.
The kids, too. I've seen that. And I've also gotten feedback from visitors who have taken part in some of your programs in the summers. Now, my last question is, sometime ago, you had informed us, you told us that you were thinking or you were going to or you had increased your hourly, your hourly charge, your hourly rate?
For...
For... I've got to find. I think it was $10 an hour you were charging? For, what was it?
For room rentals, maybe? Not sure.
Is it for programs that children take part in, that parents bring...
Okay, right. We did increase our rates from $10 to $12 per day, yes.
Oh, for the day?
Yes.
That's a hell of a good deal.
And it's consistent with what rec departments in this end of the province charge for day camp type of programs.
Oh, my.
I know we've talked about increasing those rates before, but...
It would help everyone's bottom line.
Well, we try to, we try to keep... Like, the playground program is free. We try to keep fees low so that we can get all segments of the population to attend. If we increased our prices too high, then we'd be missing out a large segment of the population, so...
Well, I hope that there are many young families, many young parents that appreciate you being there. I don't think they can find anywhere for the children any cheaper than $12 for the day.
I don't.
And for you to put all your time and all your effort and your hours into it. Thank you. I've hogged this long enough. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Counselor. Frank, what about a snow fence? Counselor Danny was making reference to young people on the roof. A snow fence. And also, are you still interested in a chairlift for the boat club at Milo? A chairlift for the older crowd going upstairs?
Definitely, I mentioned the snow fence to Rodney Doucette when I talked to him. As far as the chairlift, it's on our list of things to do. We were hoping that we could access some funds through the accessibility grants that the federal government just released. Unfortunately, municipalities and towns are only eligible for children's play structures.
That's fine.
So it wouldn't qualify to that fund. So it's on our list if we can seek funding elsewhere. But we have a few other issues with the landing area. At the top of the stairs at Milo isn't big enough. So there would have to be some alterations to the building before we could get to that point. But it's on our list.
Thank you very much. Any more comments or questions? Thank you very much, Frank.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sandy, Sandy.
I know, I'm normally quiet. I just have a question on grants and stuff that you can get. Is there any grants available for things that children can climb on to put into the playgrounds? Because I know, like, a lot of times when I've been down there, like, even when the trees had fallen, the kids were getting on the trees and that. We said, like, they can get hurt. So I asked the children what they would like, but they wanted a climbing wall. But with a climbing wall, you have to have someone there to watch them. So I was wondering if there's any kind of playground equipment that we could get a grant for to be able to put in there to help them climb instead of the buildings?
And a few years ago, we renovated the playground at the Hebron Rec Complex. And it isn't a climbing wall, but it's a climbing apparatus that it's low enough that it's not... It doesn't fall into areas like the climbing wall with safety and harnesses and that sort of thing. So the main program that we have, when we have ideas like that, is to apply through the province through the Recreation Facility Development Program. And they provide one-third funding, up to $150,000. So that's an option. Those grants, the application deadlines are February of each year. So if that's something that we want to do, then that's, you know, that's something that can become consideration through parks because they maintain the parks and playgrounds within the town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to a presentation. I see Gus and Glenn in the audience. You want to come forth and do your presentation?
Did you get the PowerPoint I emailed you? I have a few copies. I'd rather I just talk about it rather than... All right, well, good afternoon. Thank you very much for taking a few minutes to see us today. In your package, I have a presentation that we've done on waste diversion. As you know, we talk a lot about waste diversion in our part of the world and in Nova Scotia. But there's two important concepts involved in waste diversion. One is diversion itself, and the other is waste disposal. And even though we talk about improving our diversion, our diversion is actually based on our disposal, at least how the province of Nova Scotia calculates it. So today, we're just going to give a little overview of what those things mean and how they're calculated. Now, for those of you who currently sit on the Waste Check Board or have sat on the Waste Check Board in the past, this is probably all old hat. But for those of you who haven't had the pleasure of sitting on the Waste Check Board yet, you may find this informative. Can everyone hear me okay? So the first term is disposal, waste disposal in Nova Scotia. And that's the easy one to define. Waste disposal is anything that's buried in the ground. So that includes your residential collection, your IC&amp;I collection, and your C&amp;D material as well. Now, that's an important distinction to note. Hi, Madeline.
IC&amp;I and C&amp;D, say it for us.
I'm terribly sorry. IC&amp;I is industrial, commercial, and institutional. In other words, all your business waste. C&amp;D stands for construction and demolition waste, which is waste from the construction and/or demolition of buildings.
Thank you.
So all those things are included in your disposal rate in Nova Scotia. If you find yourself somewhere talking to a municipal counterpart and they're throwing a disposal number at you that's really low, ask them what's included in it. Because a lot of jurisdictions do not include C&amp;D waste. In fact, some don't even include the IC&amp;I waste. So when they say what their disposal rate is, they're just talking about the residential disposal. In Nova Scotia, we include all those things. Now, diversion, diversion's the one that's a little bit harder to calculate. If you take the amount of material you recycle and the amount of material you compost and add them together, does that equal your diversion? In some jurisdictions, they say yes. Here, we say no, that's part of the answer. Yes, those things certainly are big contributors to your diversion. But there's a lot of diversion activity that doesn't go reported. There are businesses that recycle their own cardboard. There's people who go around in pickup trucks and recycle metal. All those things are diversion, but how do you calculate those? Also, even things like reduce and reuse and a consumer's decision to use reusable bags at the grocery store. All these things are diversion activities, but how do you measure them? Well, I'll tell you how Nova Scotia does it. First, we have a quick look at sort of Nova Scotia's historical timeline in terms of waste diversion. Some of you will remember back in 1990, the CCME, the Canadian Council of Ministers in Environment, brought in a commitment to reduce waste by 50% by the year 2000. Nova Scotia was part of that commitment. In 1995, Nova Scotia introduced their Solid Waste Strategy. That was a groundbreaking document when they really got serious about waste diversion. That's the document that created the seven waste management regions, brought in our deposit refund system, created the Resource Recovery Fund Board, and banned a lot of material from landfill in Nova Scotia. And then in 2007, they introduced EGSPA, or the Environmental Goals and Sustainable Prosperity Act. And that's where that 300-kilogram-per-person-per-year target came from that we all know and love. So how do you calculate diversion? Well, often when you want to look at change in a system, you start with a baseline. So what the province of Nova Scotia did was they picked 1989 because that was the year before we started talking about waste diversion and said that's your baseline. So all current and future waste diversion activities are measured compared to that 1989 base year. So in Nova Scotia, the assumption is if you take your 1989 disposal and you subtract your current year disposal, the difference between the two is your diversion. So in other words, if it doesn't go in the ground now, and it did go in the ground in 1989, it's diverted. A rather bold assumption, but that is the assumption. So then how do you calculate your diversion rate? Well, again, we go back to that 1989 number. We look at our population, which at that time was almost 50,000 people. You look at the waste disposed, which was a staggering 32,000 metric tons per year. And you do the math, and you come up with .63 metric tons per person, or 630 kilograms for every man, woman, and child was being sent to landfill. We compare that to our present year of 2014. You look at the population. And please don't have a heart attack when you look at the change in population. Back in 1989, our region was made up of eight municipalities. It included Barrington and Clark's Harbor. Those municipalities are no longer part of our region, and that's where the biggest population change has come. Yes, we do suffer from declining population, but not at the alarming rate that appears on this slide. So if you take our current waste disposed, which is a substantially reduced 13,000 metric tons per year, and divide it out, you come up with .305 metric tons, or 305 kilograms per person per year. So we are at a 52% diversion rate compared to 1989. So calculation of diversion rate and diversion credits. You look at the seven regions across the province, and you add up their total waste diverted. You look at how much funding the RFB has available for distribution. The current fiscal year, it's just under $4 million. And there's some 354,000 tons diverted. So when you do the math on that, you get a value of $10.88 for each metric ton diverted. And that's the value of diversion credits in the current fiscal year. Now, to figure out what your share as Region Seven of that money is, we do some more math. And that's where we look at the base year population. We look at that per capita disposal rate of 650 kilograms per person. We adjust it for the change in population to give us an adjusted base year rate. So basically, you take your current population, multiply it by that number, and you come up with a theoretical number of 27,000 metric tons that would have been disposed if we weren't doing any diversion activity. So then you subtract your actual disposal for the current year of 13,000, and you get a calculation of some 14,695 metric tons of material diverted from landfill. Still with me? And then you... No, I lost you, didn't I, Madeline? So again, we're just, we're taking what we threw in landfill in 1989. We're adjusting it for population and comparing it to what we're putting in the landfill now. So we're saying that the change that's happened since 1989 is all diversion activity in one form or another. And when we do the math, we come up with a number of almost 15,000 metric tons that have been diverted because of everything from recycling and composting programs to changes in the consumer's attitude. When we take that final number and we multiply that by the dollar value of diversion credits available in the current year, we come up with $159,000 in diversion credits that are paid to the region for this fiscal year. Clear as mud. Does anyone have a question on that math? Okay. Oh, good. It's just me. You don't understand. I get it now. And the last slide, I just wanted to give you a comparison. Those who sit around the Waste Check Table have heard me talking for many years about the declining funding available from the Resource Recovery Fund Board. And if you look at that last chart, you can see in 2006, 2007, almost $7 million was available in diversion credit funding. And in that year, our region got over $300,000 in diversion credit funding. We fast forward to 1314. That money is down to under $4 million a year, and our share is $159,000. So our diversion is improving. We're doing the things that we're supposed to do. But the amount of funding available from the Resource Recovery Fund Board has dropped dramatically over that timeframe.
Gus, I got to ask. So their funding to the diversion credit program has gone from seven down to about four million, just under four million. So where do they get that money? Where does the RFB get the money that they fund this program through?
There are two principal sources of revenue. Again, as I'm sure you all know, the Resource Recovery Fund administers the deposit refund system. So when you buy your can of pop and you pay your 10-cent deposit, that money goes to the Resource Recovery Fund Board. Half of it goes back to the consumer if they bring their bottle back for a refund. So that leaves five cents. When this program initially started, that five cents that remains with the Resource Recovery Fund Board was split, two and a half cents to the Enviro Depot as a handling fee and two and a half cents to the RFB for funding municipal programs. Over the life of this program, the handling fees at Enviro Depots have increased. Now, out of that nickel, over four cents goes back to the Enviro Depot for the handling fee, and less than one cent is returned to the RFB to fund municipal programs. So that's one of their sources of revenue. The other source of revenue they have is from the sale of the materials, the aluminum and the plastic and the pop bottles. That material belongs to the Resource Recovery Fund Board, and they sell it, and they generate revenue from it. But of course, the last number of years have not been great for commodity markets. And as such, they've not made as much money on these materials as they have in the past. and as such, they've, they've not made as much money on these materials as they have in the past. In actuality, their principal source of revenue right now is our return rate, meaning the number of people who take their pop bottle back to get their deposit, is over 80%, which is a very admirable number. It means most people are participating in the program. But the reality is, is if that pop bottle doesn't go back to the Enviro Depot, then the RRFP keeps the whole dime. They didn't have to share the money. So, that's actually making up a big portion of their revenue now is the dime they get from unredeemed beverage containers. So, it's from the deposits and from the sale of the materials and from unredeemed deposits. A stunned silence fell over the room.
Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gus, do you foresee the deposit amount increasing? Has there been any rumblings about that? I could, I could see that, that coming.
Well, the deposits have not increased since the program was introduced in 1996. So, I mean, perhaps it's time. But there is talk of it happening. It has not happened, and it's not on a schedule to happen anytime soon. What they are talking about is currently, it's what they call a half-back system, where you pay a 10-cent deposit, and then you get, the consumer gets the nickel back. They are talking about adjusting it so that there is a return portion that would go to the consumer, but then the remaining portion would be a recycling fee. So, that could be adjusted based on the value of the commodity and the awkwardness of its, or the limits of its markets. Glass, for example, is very difficult to market right now. It's practically worthless. It's actually more of a burden to handle. So, they would, if, under this proposed system that they're just talking about, they would probably charge a higher deposit for a glass bottle, because it, it's more difficult for them at the end of the day. But nothing scheduled to be changed. It's just an idea that the department has floated.
So, thank you very much, Gus and Glenn. I know I'm going to, I have a question or two, but I got to read, read the report again or read your information and get some more, I'll glean some more understanding, and I'll ask you sometime.
Well, I'd welcome the opportunity to come back anytime. I'm sure Glendon would as well.
Any more, Ken?
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. A question for Sheldon, who's sitting there nice and quiet and— well, Glendon, I keep calling him Sheldon, and I apologize. I, I got a Sheldon complex here. He, yeah, maybe, no, he's more Glendon. Anyway, Glendon, I had a quick question, and I want to, I was reading The Vanguard about three or four weeks ago, and I may have misunderstood things. The amount of CND that's coming from buildings being torn down, is it fairly equally distributed among the units? Or are we disproportionate in the number of buildings? Like, for example, are our sister municipalities, like, are there things happening there with regard to demolition of buildings? Because I was kind of given the impression that we're kind of the devil's advocate there. And now, my second question to you, two, is, is the rates for CND, have they changed of recent? Or is there any increase planned on that?
The rates haven't changed in the four years this year. They've stayed the same. But as far as demolition properties, we had, I believe it was 20-odd last year demolished properties come in. In total, and around 12 of them were from the town of Yarmouth, and the rest came from the other, the other two units. So, it's fairly evenly distributed for the amount.
Probably more so of concern to us is, of course, the cost of the cells, because we is the sharing units. So, could you kind of give us an update of where we're standing on the, on the cells right now and the future of our waste going in there? Just curious.
So, we have cell one that has been in operation since 97. That is now full. We have to cap it and finish it, and we are using cell number two. The cell's cost around a half million dollars to construct. We're hoping to get eight to 10 years out of this current cell.
Hope and wish and want. I know our last cell, what was the last, what was the life of that last cell? Wasn't, it wasn't exactly—
Yeah, I'm sorry. I couldn't say offhand.
I know it was a little shorter than what was expected.
That's right.
So, are we taking precautions now? I know with you being engaged as the manager out there full-time, that the intent is, is to get longer life out of the cell. So, are you satisfied that that cell is being, shall we say, used properly?
Yeah, we, we were, we diverted approximately 200 tons from that cell last year alone. A little bit of compaction, just more management on how we put the material in there and what is going in there, a lot more removal of garbage and stuff that is banned from the CND cell.
Now, what about materials such as asbestos and materials like that? Were you able to handle it out there at the park?
We have a separate site for that.
Is it heavily used?
No.
No. We don't see a lot of that coming out.
We had 1.2 tons come in last year over, I think, 18— asbestos. We had 2.39 tons for seven vehicles, seven loads. So, it's not very heavily used.
What about brown soil, contaminated soil? What are we doing with that in this area?
We are still working it. We have the site opened.
Good.
We had about 400 tons come in last month from Waymouth. We're getting saw from his faraway, his Annapolis Royal, Barrington, Shelburne.
So, we're competitive?
That's correct.
Because before, where was it going, before we opened that cell?
Everything was going to Queens.
Yeah, so we're doing our own thing now, which is making it better for the people in this area. Thank you, thank you, Glendon.
If I could just add to Glendon's point about the cell life. Other than diverting material, the key to extending the life of the cell is in the compaction of the material in the site. And I think it's fair to say with Glendon onsite, we're seeing a lot better management of the day-to-day operation of the site and much better compaction than was there. And it's possible that some of the, the shortness of life of that previous cell was due to the fact that there wasn't the same onsite management, the same effort at compaction that Glendonstein puts into it.
So, thank you very much, Gus and Glenn. I think we're all set. Everyone okay? Thank you again.
Thank you again for your time. Thank you.
Good education. Under Business, 7A, the Draft Construction Noise Bylaw and Draft Noise Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one was requested by council some time ago. And our, sorry, our engineering technician prepared this for consideration. It hasn't been through our solicitor's eyes yet. It's really here for discussion at this point. Obviously, as a bylaw, it doesn't get any real treatment at committee as a whole. But if you're, if you'd indicate your, any questions, comments, concerns, and whether or not you wish it to go forward, we will do, we will do as you wish. What this is, is intended to do is to provide some level of, say, management and accountability on noise that would be created through construction projects that happen within the town. We've had some issues in the past where people living in nearby areas were disturbed, felt they were disturbed beyond reason. And so, Chad undertook to do some research on, on the topic, and has come back with a bylaw that, that he thinks, and I agree, at least will give us another tool to use to deal with those situations.
Thanks very much, Jeff. Madeline?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, I read through it. Great. It's, I, I'm all for it. But I noticed that hours of the day were not mentioned anywhere specifically, unless they're covered elsewhere in, in town bylaws, are they?
Going from memory, there was, there was, I believe there is something in there about hours of the day. And on the application form, there's specific information requested about when, when they would be working.
The application form says hours. Whoops.
Top of page, yeah, page three.
Page three. Oops, hold on, I got to go back. I'm on five. Okay, thank you very much. Never mind. Thank you. All right. And just for, just for, for information, for information's sake, would you describe, would you compare or, or, yeah, define a decibel, please? Or maybe Dave can do that for, for the people, everyone that's, that's, that's sitting at home watching this, wondering, what's a decibel?
Ten bells.
What is, what's, what would 75 decibels sound like, the equivalent of two?
Ken, I, I couldn't tell you that. You'd have to go.
Six beers, did you say, Counselor Mackay-Zachary?
Yeah, decibels, as, as the solicitor mentioned, is, it's the unit in which the noise is measured.
Yes.
And we do have a device that is—
That I am aware.
—for the purpose. So, what I can do is, I'm sure, I've seen charts before that kind of indicate decibel levels and equivalents, like common sounds that people are familiar with. So, I'll find a chart, and I'll circulate that to council so you can get an idea. And it will help you in the conversation with the public about this as well. When you say what 60 or 75 decibels is, you can say, well, that's like, you know, a jet engine or whatever.
Thank you. It would, it would be, yeah, it would be a great help, because especially in the summer. I know all of us, we get a lot of calls from residences when it comes to noises. And other than, than a little bit of wordsmithing, what are you looking for? You're looking for approval of, of this draft bylaw? No. Good.
Yeah, so really, it was to introduce this to you, to show it to you. And if any questions arose from just first impressions, if there's no objection, we'll bring it forward at the council meeting in two weeks for first reading, after the solicitors had a, had a look at it.
Thank you, Jim.
Is this any, is this related to, would this be related to the truck tailgate bylaw? Is that similar to that? Remember that episode with the tailgate bylaw, the banging and the clanging of tailgates? You, you remember that. You, you cannot forget that.
I can't deny that. No, I do recall that, and that is specifically mentioned in the bylaw.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Counselor Ken.
Well, I will send to you, Counselor, the decibel chart. But to give you an idea, 10 decibels is a pin dropping. 120 decibels is a thunderclap. 80 decibels is your alarm clock. 140 is a jet engine at takeoff. 180 is a rocket launcher. I'm not sure where our street cleaner fits in that. Definitely above a toilet flush of 75. Somewhere in there. But I'll flip it to council.
Thank you for the humor. So, next we'll proceed to 7B for discussion. Education, response to the council strategic plan and resource plan. No, but I wanted, I mentioned it, Ken, earlier, that if there was, we don't have to make a motion or anything, but we could talk about it. But if we don't want to even talk about it, I'm okay with that. Okay. Fair enough. Then 7C, the response to council for the Milton Corner. Ken?
So, I read this, reading the report, Dave. The famous question, still, I'm curious, why was the median put in there? Was it, I think in the 2005 Galco study, reference was made. The only reference I could see in the two studies, and I may have missed it. Was it a median was there to protect the horse? Was that the intent of the median?
No, that wasn't the intent. That was, the intent was to prevent, if I recall now, it's been 10 years.
Exactly. It's been a while, yeah.
It was to prevent conflicting vehicle movements. So, it would prevent left-hand turns onto Water Street from Vancouver and vice versa. From Vancouver going straight, or water going straight across the Irving or, or going left up Vancouver. So, it was put there to prevent conflicting traffic movements. And signs just wouldn't do that.
So, bottom line is, I read the report. I was trying to get it back up on the screen, because I was looking at decibels a minute ago. I read your report a couple of times, as a matter of fact. So, I'm not quite sure what your thoughts are, Dave, as the person. You did say the traffic signals, we've done all that. What about your thoughts on the actual moving off the horse as per the 2005 Galco study? With the idea of—
Well, the whole intent for that comment in there was to prevent people from going out and standing in the middle of the street and taking pictures of their horse, which they have done in the past.
And they still do.
When we had all kinds of tourists around town. But that, that was the whole intent, was to, to eliminate that danger to pedestrians.
But is it a doable thing? Would it not help traffic flow if we looked at that corner? Because I'm looking at the Galco study when they had the amount of traffic, which is quite, quite a, quite a bit, especially at rush hours. They trafficked, and I mean, this was 10 years ago. I would suggest it may even be slightly heavier now. We do have an issue with trucks making the turn. That is a natural flow. It's the lowest grade we have in town for fish trucks. And as the trucks are becoming larger and larger, I was out at, at the recycling depot this morning, disposing some of my medicinal bottles, for medicinal purposes only, of course. And I noticed this big honkin' truck, and it was impressive. Wow, this new crusher thing they got there was massive. That thing would never get around that Milton Corner. So, the question was to make it a better traffic flow for, for trucks. The idea of maybe taking a look at that fountain, maybe moving it a few feet either back into that little park by, by Marcos, which we own, I understand, or maybe talking to Irving to get a little hunk of land from them where their sign is right now. Because that would be also a possible area to see if we could move it. And it'd be kind of neat even to have it running again. Is that not a doable thing? And by doing that, you would pick up a little bit of a better width in area, maybe even an extra lane or something for the people making that left-hand turn. Because right now, it's the, the left-hand turn being made coming down Vancouver that's been causing some traffic issues.
Well, we can, if you'd like, we could do analysis on the level of service area. I don't think it's going to indicate that it is, is not unreasonable. But anyway, as far as moving the horse goes, I don't think you want trucks crossing the center line of that road anyway. And I don't see it improving the, the flow of truck traffic, but—
The intent would be, if the median was out, you would gain some footage there. And with the horse moved, you would gain a lot of footage from where that monument is now that would make that turn. So, you still wouldn't be turning into the lane that's going in the other direction. You'd still be in that one-flow lane, except you'd be making your lanes a little bit wider to give that little bit of flexibility for the truck traffic. That was what the, the thought is, and this is what's been passed on to me from, by some truckers, who were kind of making that suggestion, and this would make things a little bit more fluid for them.
Well, at the, at the truckers' meeting that we had with, here a while ago, that wasn't indicated to us by any of the truckers that attended that meeting that, that was a big issue. In fact, they had requested that, the big issue to them was Argyle Street and Herbert Street. That they would like to see those open again reused as a truck, repair the truck.
But were they off the, I think in talking to a couple of truckers, not to beleaguer this, who were present, they thought that the, they were off the impression going in, and just their impression, not subjecting anything to the meeting, that the Milton Fountain and the median was sank or sank, that it, nothing would ever happen there. So, they were looking at plans B and C rather than Plan A. And this is why this is brought forward, is to say, okay, could we look at Plan A? Because when this came out that we were actually looking at, there was, I had a fair amount of response from truckers who were saying, wow, this is exactly what we want. That's the natural flow, that we'd be able to go down Water, turn up, go along Main and out Stars. It'd be a perfect grade for us, rather than what we're doing now. In talking to truckers, they're not too thrilled about going up Argyle Street. I mean, they'll do it if it's a designated truck route, same as Herbert. There's quite an incline there for their trucks, especially if they're carrying liquid such as fish and gurry. They would much rather a lower, lower grade, even though their trucks are sealed as they can. That was what the issue was, was to, to see if that's indeed a possibility. The other concern was the RCMP station on, on Water Street is in an ideal location for response, because they got that flow, complete flow along Water. response because they got that flow, complete flow along Water, which is at times not that heavily used. But the RCMP cars will not be able to make a left-hand turn on Vancouver. So if they're handling a response on that part of the town or the county, it would be of great difficulty for them to get there. They would have to literally go up onto Main, go along in Vancouver, et cetera. If the median was out, they could actually go. Now, in my walks, you know, I've seen people actually run that median, I call it, where they will actually see no cars coming down, they'll actually go up the wrong side of the road and then loop over to try to beat the median, which is kind of scary as well. So I don't know whether thought has been given to that as well.
Well, I'm sure if the RCMP are in a great hurry with the lights flashing, they're permitted to make that left-hand turn. It says, I don't know the wording of the sign there, but it wouldn't preclude emergency vehicles from making a left-hand turn. As far as, I've seen truckers use Gardner Street without any difficulty. I don't know about the fish trucks, but I know Camo Seafood were at our meeting and didn't really express that concern, but...
Thank you very much, Ken and Dave. Madeline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Dennis and I, we took, we rode shotgun. We took on the invitation of the truck drivers that they offered at that meeting. I didn't attend that meeting, but we rode shotgun. We had, we had a very, a fun, a fun ride, very informative. A lot of information was shared, a lot of good points, but the main issue was, when it comes to the horse. The horse itself, the fountain, did not bother them as much as the tight turn. And what we were told is, yeah, if maybe even just 10 feet, Counselor Dennis, was it 10 or 15 feet? I don't remember. 10 feet. If the town would widen that turn right by Marcos, that right-hand turn onto, onto Main Street by 10 feet, they'd be very happy with that corner. There were some other issues, but that's for another day. I just wanted to, I just wanted to share that.
I could probably do some modeling with the turning radiuses for trucks and computer modeling, basically, to see if that would improve, improve it any for trucks making that turn.
Thank you. Dave, are you, have you given any thought about taking that medium out and putting the horse on the, on the town's property over by the Five Corners Restaurant? I, I had the opportunity to come down there the other day to make the turn, to go up towards Hebron. Two cars were in front of me to make that same turn. And I blocked, blocked off Water Street, so nobody could turn on Water Street, and nobody could turn on Main Street. And I had to wait for the, the traffic to come across Main Street to go up Vancouver Street and make the left and right-hand turn. Now, if I would have missed the lights and cars coming down Vancouver Street and want to turn from Water Street up, they couldn't do it because I'm stuck there for another light. Luckily, it didn't happen that way, but I was parallel right across because there's only room enough for two cars, and I have a longer truck.
Well, that was identified, the short queuing distance here because of the intersection, the intersection. It's not ideal, but we're stuck with that.
Well, see, but I don't, I don't know if we are stuck with it. We wouldn't be stuck with it if we take the medium out, take the horse, put it where it goes, put a left-hand turn there, and you already have the right-hand turn, put a left-hand, another left-hand turn, or a straight, one going up or one going left. You'd have another, you'd have more room for another vehicle or whatever, I'm sure. You're the traffic authority. I mean, if you're not comfortable with it, then you're not comfortable with it. You're the person that does the studies and stuff.
I think there's limited space here. I don't think you can squeeze a third lane in there, a dedicated left-hand turn lane.
Well...
As far as moving the horse goes, I recall the council had considered that a number of years ago and...
Didn't follow through it?
Didn't go that route at all.
No. But it's not to say that we couldn't go that route and take that medium out of there, right? If we, if we chose to do that.
Well, I mean, you can move the horse, not by recommendation that you remove the median, but...
Okay, well, that's, that's fair. That's fair. But then that doesn't really accomplish anything other than moving the horse. It, actually, it does for safety purposes, for people wanting to take pictures of that, I suppose. So that's, that's one good thing. So, well, just start off small, and then perhaps we might even convince you sometime.
The other thing that that does, actually, it provides pedestrian with a refuge halfway across the road.
Yeah. Other than putting the, a lot of time for, what, the, the, the medium that's there?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've checked the timing for the crosswalk there. I mean, you can put it as slow as you want, but the thing is, you try to accommodate...
Hundred percent, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The elderly.
Yeah.
But you can't always accommodate the slowest person that you...
No, that's right. I understand that. I'm good with that, but what I'm not really good with is the medium, I guess. I have a problem with that, but that's just my problem. I can live with it. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Danny. Counselor Sandy.
When we went out with a Midland Courier, when we came to go, to turn on Water Street, even when there's no snow or anything there, his, the back end of his truck had to go up onto the sidewalk there. So that's where he expressed that even 10 feet would help them just to get around. He didn't, he didn't have a problem with the horse or the medium. And another problem is, even just cars, you're low. The bridge is actually...
Well, that blocks visibility.
Exactly. So that's an issue, too.
Thanks, Sandy.
Yeah, and just to, just to add to that, I mean, in the, the bridge butt that's been put on there, that's a relatively new phenomena. I was curious about that. Why was that put on?
I have no idea. It was before my time.
I mean, that, I mean, you could see where the old bridge actually stopped, and then there's this hunk of concrete that blocks your view. And even coming down Vancouver, it's dangerous. And this, I'm glad you brought it up, Sandy, because I know, the other night, I was coming back from visiting a friend in the hospital, and you know, you really cannot see very well with that big hunk of concrete there what's going on below you in Vancouver Street on, when you make, I don't know whether you've looked at it, Dave, but something might be worthy of looking at. And I just, and I sat there the other day looking at it, and like an idiot, like I usually am, and said, why was that put there? Because you could see where the original end of the bridge was, and the only thought I had was to keep somebody from jumping into the water from the street, so. But I think the whole issue of why this horse thing was brought up was for traffic flow. And as Sandy and Madeline have alluded and Danny, there have been some concerns with, is there a way we can make that corner more efficient and make a better flow for traffic? Because there have been some issues there. So yes, I don't know whether we need a motion or a recommendation, this is going to be discussed at council, I assume, anyway. But I really think this idea of doing some modeling and saying, hey, can we do anything there in that Milton Corner to help the truckers out? You know, I really think that's something we need to be proactive and make that a more efficient traffic flow. We have the land there, you know, we may not have to move the fountain, that's fine, I can live with that. My only concern is to get the traffic moving and accommodate those larger trucks any way that we possibly can. Because it'd be a lot cheaper to do a little widening than start moving fountains and medians and all that good stuff. So I don't know, that's what I'm coming from.
So thank you very much for all that discussion. I think everyone's going to take it under advisement. So under correspondence, we have Communities in Bloom Appointment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to council the appointment of Fay Allen as a member of the Communities in Bloom Committee.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question?
She had, she had submitted an application, did she not? Did I not see your name on the, on the original application? Oh, I don't have the...
Yeah, she is, she is a member, was a member off the committee. She submitted an application for reappointment, but as sometimes happens, things get complicated. And I can simply say it was uncomplicated.
Complicated. Okay, that's fine. Things get straightened out very quickly. That's very good. I'm glad, I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion properly moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question being called. All those in favor, please say aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Next item is correspondence. Did I miss one?
Oh, no, that was pulled. It's not ready yet. I don't come forward until they're ready.
Yeah, under correspondence, I have to say this, because I read with great interest the letter from ScotiaWeb LB Wind Turbine Generator, because one of the thoughts that the previous council had, and some of us were pushing for, was actually to build a wind generator out at Lake George for the water utility. And I, I find this most amazing that we didn't grab on that, and here we have a private company who's building a wind generator there, which really strikes me really odd because at the time, we were told there was not sufficient wind there to warrant a generator. And I'm thinking, okay, you're not having enough wind, but a private company is building it, and they're investing hundreds, I don't know, maybe tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars in a wind generator. So I'm kind of disappointed that we never did it for the water utility, because I really think it would have been an awesome project to have our water utility on a, on a generator. But that's, I just want to make that as a sidebar. CEO was going to jump in on this one, I could see it coming.
There is a bit of a difference. First of all, no one ever said there wasn't enough wind, but the more favorable wind is on the coast. And so we were going for a COMFIT project, which there is a public hearing on, on Monday to deal with that, and we'll be putting up two generators. One of the other significant differences with the project that we would do under COMFIT is we were talking about 50 kilowatt, and we are still talking about 50 kilowatt generators, where this is a 2-megawatt turbine. It's a much, much bigger turbine than what we were talking about. But the way the consultant described it to us at the time, based on our wind study, is that the wind at Lake George was as good as most other areas in Nova Scotia can achieve. But the wind on our coast is phenomenal. It is among the best wind you can possibly find for a wind turbine. And so the yield from these two turbines, if we go ahead with them in, along the coast, will be, will be, will be better, the return on investment.
Thank you very much, Ken and Jeff. I don't see any more items on the agenda.
Two, two probably.
Two, oh, yes, in camera.
Just to point, Deputy Mayor, you did an absolutely wonderful job. And the chair, and I do want to say that in my term, in my term around this council table going on 10 years, this was one of the quickest committees of the whole meeting, so, and I congratulate the chair for that. Please come back again.